Led by Eric Jokovic, Principal with Ramey Associates. It's been a also a very learning process to have been involved in this housing element. Elements of this one has certainly been the most extensive. So with that, I would like to turn it to Eric, who has a presentation to provide you with a full background of where we are with the housing element and important programs are in the housing element. So Eric.
Thanks, Hanson. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this evening and Happy New Year to you all. This is a super exciting time as Ned and Hanson and Alex all pointed out because we are moving towards the adoption of this sixth cycle housing element. My name is Eric Jorkovich. I'm a principal at Ramey and Associates. We're the lead consultant on the Housing Element team, which also includes Veronica Tam and Associates, the律师for Civil Rights Under Law, and Ringcon Consultants. You can move to the next slide for us. On the screen here, you'll see the outline of our presentation this evening. I'll walk through the Housing Element process, the plan organization, sites inventory, and the Housing Element goals and programs. As part of that review, I'll summarize what changes we made to the Housing Element based on that public review period and the comments that we heard, as well as comments from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. I'll then close with some next steps in the process, and we can take any comments that you have on the Housing Element. Next slide. So the Housing Element, as Ned mentioned, is required by the state. It's got to be updated every eight years and must be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. We're entering that sixth cycle, which runs from 2023 to 2031. The timeline for the process is also dictated by the state of California, and our goal is to meet the statutory deadline of January 31st, 2023. As Ned mentioned, a cornerstone of the Housing Element is the regional housing needs allocation and the city's sites inventory. So the state forecasts the region's existing and projected housing needs, which is called that RENA. And then later on, what I'll do is I'll describe the RENA and how the city's site inventory accommodates the RENA with a buffer for lower income households. Next slide. So here's just a quick illustration of the Housing Element update process. So with each step in the process, the communities had an opportunity to provide input and guidance on plan direction. We're currently in that fourth phase. So in late December, we released a second draft Housing Element to HCD for review, and we're taking that iteration of the Housing Element through these meetings with you and City Council. Next slide. So during the community engagement process, we worked really closely with city staff to tailor our specific engagement activities to hear from residents, businesses, housing developers, and more. We launched our project website to widely share resources on the Housing Element. We conducted stakeholder interviews with over thirty stakeholders, hosted fifteen community-wide meetings, and surveyed a broad range of community members to really listen and learn about housing needs, issues, opportunities, and policy ideas for the city. We worked closely with city staff to provide interpretation and translation support and to really provide opportunities for participation from as many segments of the community as we're able. The city offered interpretation in Spanish, Vietnamese, and Mandarin during our virtual workshops, while also embedding translations into the project website, bilingual flyers, and surveys. Staff even went door-to-door to Sunny Hills, dropping off flyers in that first phase of the engagement to get engaged in the Housing Element and to participate in the engagement process. Next slide. So, specifics to the Housing Element, we wanted to really highlight that review process that we've been going through. So you'll recall that we released the public draft of the Housing Element for review, and on August 30th of 2022, we did that for thirty days. During that time, we met with you on August 31st. We hosted a community workshop, virtual community workshop, and a session with City Council on that draft Housing Element, where we talked in detail about those sites inventory and the housing programs. We also popped up at the Great Ball Farmers Market, facilitated a meeting with the city's Community Development Roundtable, and met with the Santa Clara County Collaborative Housing Collaboratives Equity Working Group. We also had a survey that was out for public review and received a number of comment letters from local organizations working on housing issues. Working with staff, we then consolidated all those comments onto the house into the Housing Element and made changes to the plan. We submitted that document to HCD for review on October the seventeenth. They had ninety days to review the document and to provide us with their comments on that document. Over the last month, we met with HCD three times, and they provided a preliminary checklist for us on the Housing Element for review. Those conversations and comments provided by HCD prompted a revised draft Housing Element, which we posted and noticed for the committee on December the thirtieth for transparency, and then we submitted to HCD on Friday. Their comment letter, which we received yesterday on the Housing Element, is on that second draft Housing Element, and it's a relatively short letter that focuses on some expanded analysis around housing constraints, past development trends, and fair housing. Next slide. So Milpitas' Housing Element itself is organized into five chapters. Our plan describes the relationship between the Housing Element and the general plan. Our conversation highlights the variety of community engagement activities and what we heard through the process. Our story highlights past accomplishments from the city, profiles demographic and socioeconomic conditions, and begins to describe some of those existing housing constraints. Our future housing needs details the regional housing needs allocation, and it shows the adequate sites to meet the RENA. And then our housing plan provides goals, policies, and programs, really the kind of the the main part of the Housing Element itself. Now, our team conducted a lot of technical analysis to go along with that, including around housing needs, constraints, opportunities, and more. This analysis, along with what we heard through the engagement process, really lays the foundation for the continuation of existing city programs, but as well as enhancements to those programs moving into this cycle of the Housing Element. And the technical work and a summary of the community engagement is included in those seven technical appendices for the Housing Element. Uh, next slide. So tonight, we're going to really focus on two key components of the Housing Element, the sites inventory or the future housing needs, and the housing plan. Next slide. So, as you all know, the cornerstone of the Housing Element is really the regional housing needs allocation and the city's sites inventory. It's the city's responsibility through the Housing Element to identify sites that are able to accommodate the RENA. So for the sixth cycle Housing Element, the RENA for Milpitas is six thousand seven hundred and thirteen units. It's that bar chart on the far right-hand side. This is a two-hundred percent increase or double what the RENA was for the fifth cycle, so that three thousand two hundred and ninety units on a bar on the left side. This is due to changes in state law that require not only the consideration of future housing needs, but also for unmet existing needs. The chart really shows the breakdown of the RENA overall by income levels for both the fifth and sixth cycles. So you can see big increases across all income levels. The chart also in the middle shows us how well the city has done at meeting the RENA during the fifth cycle. So through 2021, the city has permitted over three thousand housing units, a little less than the RENA overall, but one year less than the RENA cycle. However, as you can see, most of those units are for above moderate incomes. So while the while the city has been able to permit those above moderate income units, it hasn't done as well meeting the need for the lower and moderate income housing. These numbers reflect the challenges faced by building housing for low and moderate incomes for communities around the state and Bay Area with limited state and local funding to meet those housing needs. And likewise, as you know, the city's affordable housing ordinance went into effect in 2018. So projects entitled before that date were not subject to the inclusion of a requirement. So over time, you would expect to see those numbers increase. Uh, next slide. Um, to complete the sites inventory or the assessment of our ability to meet the regional housing out needs allocation, we went through a multi-step process to ensure we have adequate sites. Now, on the screen now is that sites inventory. So first, what we do is we identify what we call credits. Those are things like accessory dwelling units and pipeline projects. Those, the parcels shown in red are those pipeline projects. We also have ADUs, which are not currently mapped, but are calculated using an average number of permitted units over the last three years. Now, next, we calculate the remaining RENA by subtracting the credits from the total RENA. Then we identify different opportunity sites based on criteria like parcel size, ownership, whether it's a vacant parcel, or parking, or an underutilized commercial parcel, or parcels with known developer interest for housing. We have in orange what we call those opportunity sites. And and finally, we have a third category called rezoned sites. These are, these include potential housing opportunity sites that are candidates for redevelopment, but would require rezoning to allow residential uses or higher density residential use. As you can see, the majority of these sites are located within the metro and Gateway Main Street specific areas, both consistent with those specific plans, but as well as your overall vision in your general plan as well. Slide. And here's a zoomed-in map to the northern portion of the city with sites along Dixon Landing Road, California Circle, and Calvares Boulevard. Next slide. And here's a zoom in to the southern half of Milpitas. Uh, most of the sites are located with, as you can see, within the metro plan area and the Gateway Main Street areas overall. Next slide. So here is the summary table where we actually compare those numbers. So across the top, we have the RENA by income level. That's in the orange. We list potential ADUs and pipeline sites as credits and subtract those from the RENA to arrive at our remaining RENA. So we need, after subtracting those out, we need to accommodate about forty-three hundred additional units on opportunity and rezoned sites. With opportunity and rezoned sites, we have about seven thousand units or a surplus of two thousand six hundred and eighty-five units over the remaining RENA. Now, HCD wants us to have a buffer of fifteen to thirty percent uh, on the sites for very low and low-income units. When we combine those two, we have a surplus of about four hundred units or an eighteen percent buffer. So in summary, the sites inventory really accommodates that required RENA and the needed low-income buffer. Next slide. So the sites inventory really changed in two ways since the public review draft based on HCD direction. So first, the metro-specific plan will be adopted by council after January 31st. So they asked us to move those sites that had been opportunity sites into the rezone category. Second, we adjusted the ADU number to reflect permitted ADUs overall. And as you can see, overall, these changes had very little impact on the capacity of the city and the sites inventory overall. Mostly just shifting between those two types and categories. Uh, next slide. So on the screen now are the sixth cycle Housing Element goals. As you all know, the goals are really intended to describe the end state or where we want to be in the future. Um, like the fifth cycle goals, these cover housing sites of production, existing housing resources, housing diversity, fair housing, conservation, and sustainability. They also cover a handful of new topics like special needs populations, unhoused population, connection to mobility, and implementation capacity. And like other general plan elements, these six cycle goals include a series of housing policies to guide future decision-making. We're not going to go into those in detail today. We're going to focus on those housing programs. Uh, next slide. So on the screen now are those housing programs or the activities that city staff will take on over the next years to support the community's vision for housing. So these are the same set of housing programs that we presented to you back in August. Uh, and unlike those earlier meetings, we're not going to go into that, those programs in detail. Rather, we're going to spend the next few slides describing the changes that we made to the housing plan, based first on public comments during the public review period, and then second, on those comments received by HCD. Next slide. So input received during the public review period was integrated directly into the Housing Element before we submitted that document to HCD for review. This slide summarizes general changes to the element. So we summarized Phase Three community engagement. We better linked the housing constraint section to the housing programs. We edited the housing policies and then provided more detail in the housing programs, things like adding completion dates, clarifying some ongoing versus new actions, added some quantified metrics where appropriate, and then added community input section to some of those programs that were most discussed during the public review period. Uh, next slide. And so here on the screen are some of those policy changes that we made to the Housing Element during the problem comments received during the public review period. This includes changes like added communication between property owners and developers to exhibit interest in redeveloping your properties, refined policies on school district coordination to continue working with them over time to look for opportunities on their sites, revised policies to continually review and right-size development fees on housing development, particularly to look at adjustment and deferment of fees for affordable housing development over time to really encourage production of those um, housing units, balancing commercial and residential uses within the Housing Opportunity Zone project, looking to add, we added a policy to streamline housing permitting and procedures consistent with new state laws, which were passed during their public review period, um, and other city services, uh, fee studies. Um, and we included revised policies associated with supportive housing care in disabled populations. Uh, next slide. Um, additionally, we revised some of the housing programs themselves based on comments during the public review period. This includes changes like adding additional actions related to engaging the property owners who showed interest in redeveloping their properties, revising actions related to housing for persons with disabilities and their caregivers, um, reflecting ongoing coordination between the city and the San Andreas Regional Center, updating the anti-displacement program with a new ongoing tenant survey, and adding the tiny home studies that the city's already undergoing, and looking at things like permit streamlining overall. So working with city staff, we took all of those changes and they integrated them into the Housing Element that was submitted to HCD for review on October the seventeenth. Next slide. So, as I mentioned earlier, we met with HCD three times at the end of last year. Through our discussions with them and their preliminary Housing Element review, we, they identified a number of technical sections that they wanted us to strengthen. This slide shows those revisions to the technical appendices. This includes expanding analysis on special needs populations, and extremely low-income households and the needs assessment, expanding analysis on development standards, SROs, SB thirty-five procedures, um, and development review process and housing constraints analysis, adding more detail on the pipeline projects and small opportunity sites in the sites inventory and future housing needs, um, appendix, expanding analysis on patterns of historic segregation in the city, and then analysis of median income, cost burden, and displacement in the affirmatively furthering fair housing appendix, and adding a discussion of how the outreach was specifically incorporated into the housing elements. Uh, next slide. And so based on that additional analysis, plus additional discussions with HCD, um, they directed us to make some specific changes to the housing programs themselves. This including, included adding actions and timelines for city-owned sites in the sites inventory, monitoring and continual continual review of the city's ADU ordinance to make sure that it consistently updated with new state laws, which are happening annually or biannually now. Really reflecting the city's ongoing programs for rent relief and assistance programs, adding an action to prioritize water and sewer services to lower-income households, um, and then adding zoning ordinance updates for things like supportive housing, SROs, procedural updates for SB thirty-five and the permitting requirements. Um, and then finally, adding a metric for, uh, missing middle housing and tracking that over time, and revised actions to the development standards and incentives. All of these revisions were incorporated into a second HCD review draft or that hearing draft for your consideration this evening. Uh, next slide. So as Alex mentioned earlier, um, the next steps in the process will be after we, after a recommendation from Planning Commission, we would take the Housing Element to City Council for adoption. After that Housing Element is adopted by City Council, what we do is we make up any, we make any cleanup changes to the Housing Element recommended by Planning Commission, Council, and any, any comments by HCD. We take that, clean up the Housing Element, and then we submit it to HCD for certification. They have sixty days to certify the Housing Element or write a response letter, uh, to the city if they, if they would like to see additional changes to the Housing Element itself. Uh, next slide. So with that, I'll leave up the recommendation, uh, for this evening that is in your packet, which is really to adopt that resolution recommending that City Council adopt an addendum to the Milpitas 2040 General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report and adopt the Housing Element update of the Milpitas General Plan. I'll pause there and just say thank you all for having us here this evening. We're happy to answer any questions that you have as a team, and I also have Entrez Handen from my team, Ramey and Associates, here to answer questions, uh, this evening. So thanks again for having us here, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, for the presentation. At this time, do any of the planning commissioners have any questions, you know, or staff, Director Andrade, or Mr. Jorkovich, or any of the other consultants there? Vice Chair.
Yeah, you know, I've been thinking here, and the state making us, you know, get a bunch of more housing. Do the hotels count as part of the numbers for the housing? Because there's quite a few rooms in our hotels here in town.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to ask, yeah, Mr. Jorkovich to, to respond here.
Thanks, Alex. Um, hotels do not count towards your regional housing allocation, although projects like Home Key do count to it. So those types of programs where you're converting, um, converting hotels into supportive housing like that project do count towards the regional housing allocation, but hotels themselves do not count.
Okay, and that's a state, uh, what you, what would you call it, a state recommendation or a state law that we can't use our hotels?
The, the state has, um, published a very specific set of guidance uh, around the sites inventory that outlines the types of things and standardizes that across the state, right? About the types of units and the criteria for the units that you can count and include within your site inventory. So yes, they provide the kind of the parameters and the guidelines for what we can include in that sites inventory.
Okay, I was just, you know, I just had that question because, you know, you go live in a motel for two, three days or a hotel for two, three days, and it's considered home to you for those two, three days or whatever it is. So, uh, that's why I had the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, here, Dylan. Any other questions for me, the commissioners? I, I, I actually, if there's no questions, I have a question. If you can go to the slide nine, you know, that's the one we're showing the future housing needs. Yes, that, that's the slide there. So, you know, just, just wondering in terms of, um, I guess for the sixth cycle, uh, you know, RENA numbers there. Um, so just want to clarify, uh, you know, I think I just want to make sure my understanding was correct. So the, the total number there, the six thousand seven hundred and thirteen there, that's, uh, the number for that time period shown on there, right? Twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, and then just the other question I had was, um, the projection, you know, going from the fifth cycle to the sixth cycle, um, the two hundred and four percent. Uh, you, you might have stated this, just, you know, just clarification. Um, how, how is that projection made from, I mean, going from, is that just based on the numbers that's, you know, on the number of units here, and then also just what's in, um, being planned for the future?
Um, just to take a step back, the, the way that the housing allocation works is it starts at the state level. So the state identifies the need for housing across the entire, its entire jurisdiction over this time period. The state then allocates a portion of that to each of the major regions in the, so Southern California, Bay Area, Sacramento area, Northern Monterey Bay, right? So, uh, San Mokin, Central Valley. So they, they take that big number and they break it across the state into different regions. Then, um, the Association of Eight, uh, Bay Area Governments, so our kind of regional metropolitan planning organization, then worked through a multi-step process with jurisdictions and decision-makers across the region to take that number for the region and then to break, to develop a methodology to allocate that how, that housing need across all of the jurisdictions within, uh, the region. So once, that's, that's that, and that's the six thousand seven hundred and thirteen. So they go through this big process, uh, to do that, in which they get a lot of feedback from the counties, from the local jurisdictions, and define that methodology and then start to allocate it out. And then each of the jurisdictions then has to develop their housing element and their sites inventory to accommodate that housing needs allocation.
Okay, all right. You know, thanks for the clarification. And I was just wondering, you know, just, you know, going from what we had before, then the two hundred and four percent, you know, is, uh, you know, so it sounds like that the, it's, it's based upon, at least what I'm hearing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, just some, you know, state allocations there. Is that correct? And, and then distributed based upon the, uh, uh, the different regions?
Correct. And, and it's based on both future, future housing need, what the projections are for growth for housing need, right? But also on, in this cycle, a little catch-up, right? We're going through a housing crisis in the last, and a lot, over the last eight years. And so part of the big jump that you see for your regional housing allocation, you'll see across the region, across the state, and across all local jurisdictions, this kind of this big jump because it's both to, to look at that both future housing need, but also some of that unmet need from this current cycle and this current housing crisis that we're still going through.
Right. All right. Thank you for the clarification there. That's all the questions I had. Um, going back to the planning commissioners, uh, any questions, uh, any of the commissioners have? Okay. If there's no questions, then, um, oh, uh, go ahead. Planning Director has a comment.
Uh, just a quick, a couple of quick comments that might stimulate some, um, thoughts by the, and some additional deliberation by the Planning Commission. Um, if you go back actually to slide nine, I thought there was kind of an interesting thing that you might, and I, I bring this up because it, um, directly relates to the work that the Planning Commission does each, you know, every other week, every two weeks when you're here in the chambers and looking at projects in particular, um, you know, moving forward over the next eight years as you serve on this commission and projects come before you that are residential projects. Always keep in mind, I think, this chart and the, the, these numbers that we're trying to reach. Um, I thought I would point one thing out that's, um, I think is a positive trend in Milpitas. And if you look at that middle bar that is, that has the three thousand thirty-two units above it. So those are the, that is the total number of units that have been permitted units. So those are, they may have been built, or they may have just been, you know, have come to the Planning Commission and received approval, and, and they're working toward their building permits. And looking at that number, you know, most planners would say, well, the city of Milpitas has actually done pretty good, pretty well, and And looking at that number, you know, most planners would say, well, the city of Milpitas has actually done pretty good, pretty well in uh in comparison to a lot of other cities around the state that haven't produced that much housing. And we all know, as we drive around, that most of those units are in our transit area. There was one, uh in the time that I've been here in the past four years, there was one single-family neighborhood up on North Park Victoria by Robeson Homes that was approved. I believe there were seventy units there. This, this number also includes the eighty U's that are being approved. So it, it's actually a pretty good number. But the downside, of course, is that the bar itself, that there's just two colors, they're yellow and blue. And you heard in the presentation a reference to something that we, uh planners refer to as missing middle housing. And we definitely have missing middle here, meaning that the middle two bars, the orange bar and the green bar are missing in the middle. We haven't permitted very many of those. So some of the policies in our current housing element are directly related to missing middle. And what, you know, what kind of policies can the city put in place that will encourage the development of that type of housing? And, you know, one question that you might have, and perhaps the consultants could elaborate a little bit more on that particular issue in the city. A very positive note is that number at the bottom, the two hundred and forty-three units in blue. And, you know, it, it doesn't come anywhere near the one thousand four units that we, that were part of our previous Rena numbers. But the reason those, most of those units, I'm going to guess, are down on single court. We have two projects, two hundred percent affordable projects that at some time in the past few years came to this planning commission and went through the process and were approved. And those two hundred and forty-three units were required because of the city's new affordable housing ordinance. So you begin to see how the, the different things that come before you really have an impact on the, the, literally the bottom line here for housing production. So as I would expect, that as we go forward in the next eight-year cycle, we will have many more both the blue and the green, the low and the very low income units because of the requirements of our, the city's affordable housing ordinance. So when you, and I, I just again bring that up because as you receive presentations from planning staff on uh proposed housing projects, and we will always, there will always be some section in there about the affordable housing units or the I know we have another one coming before you pretty soon with some ADUs in it, but all of those units will go toward that bottom number. And one of the things that we might do, um it's a little more work for staff, but, you know, as part of that section of our staff report, maybe we will point out how that helps, you know, maybe, or on an annual basis, um we always do a report to the state. We could bring that to the planning commission to let you know how we're doing on, you know, eat, each of the next eight years. How are we doing toward meeting these numbers? But that definitely is a positive trend to have at least two hundred and forty-three affordable units there. And then all of the uh the two hundred, the other two hundred, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight units that were uh above moderate. One other thing I wanted to uh give a little bit more background on, and I, I promise I won't go long into this, but uh we were Eric was, uh Mr. Yurkovich was talking about the how the number, those Rena numbers, how they come down to us. And then so the, there's some estimates by the state. And then he mentioned that they come to the regional government, the Association of Bay Area Governments, or A-BAG. And I just would like you to know a little bit of the, the behind-the-scenes work that was done by staff on that. And that it, before A-BAG sent, you know, sent these numbers out to this communities, um they had formed a methodology subcommittee. And um all of the cities, certainly in the South Bay, were very interested in what is the methodology going to be for them to determine how many units each of us gets assigned in our Rena numbers. And we discussed this on a, for going back two to three years ago, we started discussing this locally of all the, uh the regional uh South Bay governments. And um we also uh received, we uh submitted for a grant. So we were, as a body, we received a regional grant and created what was called the Santa Clara County Housing Collaborative. And we had a couple of representatives who went and they participated in that methodology subcommittee so that we could have a, a voice in that. And, and that um housing collaborative continues to meet every month. And we coordinate and we come up with strategies and we share information. Well, how, now how are you doing on your housing element? And back and forth. And now we've all kind of switched gears and we're all talking about, well, have you received your comment letter from HCD? And what, what were your comments and how are you doing? And I, I'm happy to report that, you know, we've been very proactive. Our, our consultant teams have been very proactive in meeting with HCD ahead of time to limit the number of comments that we receive from HCD. So even though it looks like a very aggressive schedule, you know, we've tried to be very proactive in how we, in, in our um conversations, not only with other local governments, but with the state organization that certifies our housing element. Just a little bit of a background there. But I, again, uh I, I thought if you wanted to, maybe we could hear a little bit more from the consultants on, you know, different topics like missing middle housing, if that's of interest, or if you have another particular interest. I know they did a lot of work on um homelessness issue, which is, you know, very big in our community and all the other communities. So if that's of interest to you, um those are just a few suggestions. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, uh Planning Director. Um okay, Vice Chair, it's like you, you wanna?
Yeah, you know, man, I've got a question for you. Some of the other cities in the area here, for an example, you know, maybe Hillsborough or Los Altos Hills, some of the, you know, wealthier communities, do they even bother doing this? Or if they do, if they don't, do they get fined? What, what happens to them?
Now, that's a very good question. And uh yes, every city in California is required to have a general plan. And one of the required elements of that general plan is the housing element. Now, um the consultants mentioned that uh different areas of the state uh operate on different timelines. So this is the year when all of the Bay Area governments, um Eric probably knows how, exactly how many there are, like, you know, seventy-two, ninety. Every city in the Bay Area is currently uh preparing a, a housing element. We're all scrambling to get it done before the deadline on January thirty-first. Um and so, yes, it's, it's a good question because uh some some communities have been more aggressive than others in producing housing. As I mentioned, um Milpitas actually, I think, stands up pretty good. We, we have, we haven't met, fully met our current Rena number, but we've come pretty close. And we've done a lot better than other communities. And some of that is because of policies going back ten or more years ago, when the, you know, the original transit area specific plan was adopted. And we created an area in our city where housing would be produced, and it's been pretty successful. A lot of other cities don't have that opportunity. And, and they, either they, they haven't, or they, they chose not to pursue aggressive housing policies. And that's one, it's not the only reason, but it's one of the reasons why we currently have a housing uh, a housing crisis in our state. So, and one of the reasons that the, the, or we would say the state stepped in and they created a system like the Rena numbers, the regional housing needs allocation. Every city in the state receives an allocation. And there's a lot of wrangling around that because some cities receive what they feel is, you know, an unfair allocation. I do believe that this year, and uh the consultants may know a little bit more, um I, I believe that there was some credit giving for cities like Milpitas that did a little bit more in the current um cycle for producing housing. So there was a benefit there. But the really big benefit that uh most cities um need or want or are, are required to have a, a certi, you must have a certified housing element. And that, it's like one of the, the standard or the most basic requirements for almost any state grant that the city might receive. And, and you know, the first box that you check is, do you have a certified housing element? So that the city will, or the, the state wields that as kind of a hammer, saying, you know, cities, you will, you will have this um certified housing element, or we won't give you any, you, you will not be eligible for grant funding. So that's pretty big. And then in, in the, in recent years, the, this uh depart, uh California State Department of Housing and Community Development has become much more aggressive in enforcing the cities, or the, excuse me, the state's housing laws. And, you know, the, in addition to the, the Rena numbers, or this, this cycle for the sixth cycle are substantially larger than they have been in previous cycles. Concurrently, the, the state um housing and uh community development uh increased its staff. And they've, and I, they've, I think they've increased their legal team. And, you know, there's, there are stories. The, the Bay Area is currently going through updating its housing elements. This was done uh previous years down in Southern California. And for those cities that were not aggressive enough or that, or HCD felt like they were dragging their feet, um that they have gone after them legally and aggressively to enforce the state's housing uh policies. And, and a lot of that is because the, the, the state government recognizes, again, the crisis for affordable housing that we're having. So they're, they're taking added measures that they haven't, or more aggressive measures that they haven't taken in past years. Eric, I don't, I'm, Yurkovich, I don't know if you would like to add anymore to that. There's, there's a lot, you know, we could go on and on. There's a lot that can be said about housing in California. But just to give the planning commission a little more context for why we're here and, and how other cities approach this.
No, I, I think that was a great summary. Um and I, and I think for Milpitas, it's a lot about the grant program applications and the types of funding that would or would not be available to communities that have a certified housing and adopted housing element. Um I think that's a good one. The other one that you might hear a lot, it's actually been in the news quite a lot recently, is something called the builder's remedy. And so cities that don't have a certified housing element, um a housing developer can go in and um bring up project in that has at least twenty percent affordable housing with, within the project itself. And the city can do very little to deny that project if it comes in, if they do not have a compliant housing element. So it's, it's one of those new tools that were part of the state's Housing and Accountability Act that was passed a few years ago, which is now being implemented and, and, and happening. Those projects are starting to come forward, particularly in project, in communities in Southern California, who are a little earlier on the cycle. And they can come in with projects that are inconsistent with cities' general plans and zoning codes. And the city has very little uh control over what can happen in those instances. And so you, actually, you probably, if you read the newspaper closely enough, you might see some um references to what's called the builder's remedy. Um and a lot of communities right now are working to certify their housing, or to adopt their housing elements in the Bay Area this month in response to, to that.
Hey, thank you. Uh based on some of the comments from planning director, any, any questions from other commissioners?
Chair, I'd like to make some uh comment, or maybe ask some, in more information.
Yes, sure. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Romano.
First, I wanted to say that those charts and those graphings were very informative. It really gives even the citizens and us information of what's what the city's planning and doing. And I also appreciate that the city's already head-on in, like what planning director had said, we had moved on with the zoning amendments and all of that preparing us. But thinking that Milpitas is such a limited land, do you have a graph maybe that shows how this could be met, that in that chart number, slide number nine? How could this be met in a way, what are there that we could do? If I'm out there as a citizen, how can I ask people? How can I ask developers? I men, you mentioned um uh Mr. Um Yurkovich that if there are developers that was about willing to give twenty percent for low-income housing, it'll make it up. But we want the city to be at least headed to, to meet this. I was just wondering, we are, that's a limited land, and how do we expand this housing? How, how do we go about it? Is there a graph that can show that in certain number of months or years, we could meet up to it?
That, that's a, that's a great question. And so what we do um is take those numbers, those total numbers that's six thou, six thousand seven hundred and thirteen units. And then an additional fifteen to thirty percent buffer for those lower-income units. And we work with, very closely with city staff through kind of an iterative process to identify sites within the community where we can accommodate that Rena, where the city has capacity, so to speak, to achieve those numbers. And so that's what this site's inventory is on your screen right now. And so some of those sites are the red sites, those are pipeline projects. So those are the ones that are moving through the approval process now. There are orange ones, which already have the zoning in place to, and the conditions where a pro, a housing project could go forward. Maybe the site is vacant, or maybe there's developer interest for a particular site. And then there's sort of the rezones, like those, those yellow sites. And a lot of those, as we talked about earlier, are in your two specific plan areas, which are already undergoing this process of looking at, well, here's what the land use is currently, here's what the designation allows. And so here's this new specific plan that's going to change the underlying zoning for those to accommodate more housing or more jobs or community facilities, right? All the great things that you do through the specific planning process. So this map, it kind of synthesizes all of that and identifies which of those sites are, can help you meet and help you meet that number of six thousand seven hundred and thirteen units plus the buffer. So that's what this, that's what this uh map is intended to show.
How, how do we promote this? How do we promote this outside so people can come and invest and develop this orange and yellow and, and red pipeline sites? We show them the map, I guess?
I would, I, I would think. No, please.
Oh, I, I was just going to give a little in, uh additional interpretation on this map and try to tie it to some of the work that we're doing. So if you look at this map, and do, did we have the other slide that shows it in closer up? Is that the subsequent? Yeah. So let's take a look at this one, for example. So this is uh the northern portion of the city. You can see um I uh, I ate, oh, oh, they're mislabeled. I eight eighty is on the left. It says two thirty-seven. That's actually I eight eighty. And up there, there's a large yellow um kind of polygon, a, a California circle. And the reason that's yellow, you'll see that that's identified as a rezoned site. We actually have a project that we're currently reviewing on that site by, that was put forward by Pulte Homes. It involves a general plan amendment and a rezon amendment, because that, that land is currently zoned as, uh believe it's still industrial park. And or, yeah, so industrial park. But uh a year or so ago, we went before the city council and they, they um had directed us. They said, well, let's take a look at this project that's being proposed by Pulte Homes. So we're currently reviewing that now. And it would involve um creating a um, some additional housing in that area. Now, if you're familiar with California Circle, we'll recall that AB Home completed a townhome project the bottom of California Circle a year or two ago. And then just as you get off the eight eighty there, there's another project called Waterstone, another townhome project that was also completed uh probably five or six years ago. And so that area is slowly transitioning, not fully transitioning, but slowly transitioning to a little bit more housing. So that's, that's why that's identified as a rezon site. And what the, what staff and the consultants did is we took a look at, well, how many acres are there? And what is the zoning? And how many units does that translate into? And I, I believe there, I, I will, I, I don't remember the exact number, but let's say it's around three hundred units. And I believe they're proposing twenty percent affordability there. So we, we can calculate how many units will be there and how many affordable units. And then we loaded that into our available sites inventory. And then we told the state it's, it was part of the overall number of units that we think that we can produce. Let me give you another example. So up at the top, you have that red rectangle. That's this um Sunny Hill site. And a, a number of years ago, uh came before this commission, as well as the council. Um the owners of the Sunny Hill site, there was a large open space in an older community center, which they demolished. And right now, they're, they're currently uh constructing uh, oh, I should know the number there, two forty, I think it's forty.
Forty-four units.
Forty-four, yes, thank you. You're, you probably have the table, and I, yeah, forty-four new units there. So that's red because, and you'll see that red is pipeline site. So that's in the pipeline because it's approved and it's under construction. And then give you another example, right? At the top of that red, that, that is the Sunny Hills, you'll see a little orange rectangle. There's, if, if you're up on Dixon Road and you go by Sunny Hills, you'll see that there is a, a medium to smaller-sized vacant lot, right? There in the middle of uh neck, it's in between where the Sunny Hills apartments are and the commercial center that's there. And so that's in the orange because it's an opportunity site. It's vacant. And so it's available. And if somebody wanted to come in with a proposal, that would be a very good opportunity to build more housing there. And I would even go so far as to say, you know, I was talking a moment ago about the missing middle. And that's an ideal site because it's, it's small, so you couldn't build a, a large building. And that's an ideal site because it's, it's small, so you couldn't build a, a large building there. And it probably has a height limit, so it couldn't go too large. But you could do a little bit more than townhomes. And so you'll get something, you might have a fourplex or an eightplex, or you might even go, might even be able to get twelve units there. But as part of our analysis, we looked at that site and said, well, here's how many units we think is reasonable to go there. And when we send our housing, and we did that for number, any, all of the sites that are shown in color on this map, both this map and the, and the southern portion of the city, we, we analyzed the capacity for new housing on, and here's the southern site. Analyze the capacity for those sites. And part of what the Department of Housing and Community Development is, when they review our housing element, is they look at our numbers and to see if they're realistic. And this goes back to Vice Chair Serradella's question a moment ago. In past years or in past cycles, many cities would just identify a site and they might say it would have a certain number of units and it wasn't. To be quite honest, it wasn't very realistic. But in this cycle, again, how the state has become much more, taking a much more critical eye at housing elements. And they want to know that if a city is proposing that they're going to build housing on a particular site, how is that, how realistic is that actually going to happen? Is that proposal? And so, and I know on our sites, we're, we're, we did really good analysis. I'm, you know, congratulations to our really good consultants. And I, I felt like we had really solid analysis, but we still got comments back from HCD on our analysis. And that's some of what we're doing now in, in response to the comments we got. Since this map is up, and not, again, not to prolong, but let me, let me just comment on one thing because it's a literally the hundred pound gorilla in the room. So you, the very large yellow blob that you see in the middle here is the Great Mall site. And this is a very interesting site because, you know, in, in identifying that as a rezoned site, it's shown in yellow here. We're not suggesting that it's immediately going, you know, we're immediately going to replace the Great Mall with housing. A Great Mall is very viable and it's an enormous asset to the city, both in terms of a regional draw as well as a revenue generator for the city. So we certainly wouldn't want that to happen. But what is occurring is, you know, we're, we're in the middle of updating our metro plan. Our last meeting, you received a presentation about that. And a, a very key element of the metro plan is the eventual, we've referred to as evolution of the Great Mall from its current iteration into something different. And now this is privately owned property, but we have had the owner, Simon Properties, owns a Great Mall. A number of years ago, they approached the city and they said, well, you know, over time, if we were to, if we were interested in, say, converting some of our excess parking lot, surface parking into another use, which might be mixed use, which would include housing and some smaller commercial. And they would actually replace surface parking with structured parking. So you wouldn't lose any parking spaces and you wouldn't lose any commercial, but you would in, intensify the development on that side and add housing as, would the city support that? And, you know, so we went back and forth on that. Now that's, that's, the, the details on that are to be determined later. And there likely be some type of development agreement between the private property owner in the city. But in order to get that ball rolling, one of the things that we would need to do, and the reason this is yellow on the rezon site is the current zoning on the entire hundred ninety-nine acres of the Great Mall site is currently C two, which is general commercial, and it doesn't allow any housing units. So if you wanted to build a housing unit, then now you wouldn't be able to do it. But under the metro plan, which is about to be adopted, hopefully by the council next month, it would change the zoning from that site from C two to a mixed use. And that would allow both commercial and then some housing sites. And then again, what, what that would look like, what the configuration would be and how many units would be in entail? We, we don't know yet, but for our purposes in the housing element, we do have to show it as a rezon site because it's an enormous opportunity for the city. And I would go so far as to say, not only in this housing cycle, but eight years from now, when we come back, well, like I, I predict that we will be looking at that Great Mall site to help us meet our next, not the seventh round of, of RENA, because we haven't fully, I think on that site, again, our, our consultants from RAMY can tell us how many site, or how many units they attributed to that site for this cycle. I don't even know if we included that in here, but but it's an enormous thing. And then, sorry, and then I always, I always say one last thing, but a, a couple of things, this is very interesting. We are also updating our Midtown Plan or our Main Street Gateway Plan. And if you look up Main Street, just north of the big yellow blob, which is the Great Mall, you'll see all those very small orange sites. Yeah. And those are more opportunity sites. So as we, as we drive, and we didn't include all of Main Street, but as we update the Main Street plan, yeah, there we go. These are smaller parcels because that's an older part of the city. And generally the parcelization of the land is smaller. And, and this is a really good example because some of those are vacant. Some of those are underutilized and could be redeveloped. Some of those, the property owners have also approached the city and they're very interested in redeveloping their property. And they're just waiting for us to finish our update of the gateway plan in order to have the, the very definite rules and hopefully will streamline the process so that those areas can be redeveloped into the type of vibrant mixed use community that has been envisioned for Main Street for a lot of years. But one of the, we'll call it the foundational document or the foundational policy for all of that to happen is this housing element. And so we've identified a lot of sites along, smaller sites along Main Street. But this is a good example. So we talk about, well, we have a, the housing element includes policies and programs. Well, one of the policies and the programs in order for this to happen is to have parcel mergers. So if you have a smaller parcel and you want to build a housing project, you might need to buy the two adjacent parcels. And we, we actually already see this happening on one of the, I won't pinpoint it here. But one, there's one of the parcel, a couple of parcels along Main Street that have a, and we're currently reviewing a proposal from a company called True Life Companies that builds townhomes. And they have a proposal in front of the city. They came in with one lot. And then as we were, started looking at it, they actually bought the adjacent lot. So you, you begin to see this happening already, but the, the the housing element itself, because it will establish these policies and programs, it will actually help that happen more along the way. So that's, those are just, I'm sorry to go on and on, but those are just a few examples of, of how this will happen. And sorry, I do have one more. Can you see over there on I eight eighty? This is a very interesting one, too. Over on the far left side, if, oh, roll, scroll a little bit. So I call it the horn. It's kind of like the horn of Africa. It's up there. It's, it's, that property is owned by the Sobrato Organization. And right now there are a number of very nice office buildings there that are occupied by nonprofit. So as we began the process of updating our housing element, this is a good example. Sobrato Organization is a very good developer in the South Bay. They actually contacted the city and they said, well, we don't want to do anything now, but in the future we may want to. So as you update your housing element, would you be open to the idea of redesignating, or in this case rezoning our property to something that would allow housing to go there? And we said, sure. So we, this is a, a, a good example, too, of our community outreach where the housing element team and the consultants reached out to Sobrato to get their input on, well, what type of, what do you think would happen here? Again, it won't happen. This is very much like the Great Mall site. It won't happen immediately. But when it does, we want to be sure that we have the right zoning and the right policies and programs in place to help that move along. And that's one way, in answer to Commissioner Mercedes's question, Albono's question is, one of the ways that we can help promote this is, you know, by, by adopting this housing element, then we're putting in place on all of these parcels across the city, policies and programs in place to help that. Really, we're creating the potential for housing to occur on those sites, many of which would not currently allow housing. But once this is adopted, it, it would move the, the needle in that direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Thomas. That's, that, that, that's great. So if you, if we put this and this happens, we will be able to meet our goal. Should it happen in the future, having all of this that you, that was projected looks?
Yeah, we, we will have, we will have laid the foundation for us to meet that goal. So that, I think that's a very easy and simple way to look at this is the city has, or the, excuse me, the state in the form of RENA number has given us a goal that we're going to work toward. We're going to produce this many housing units in the next eight years. And then we've identified opportunity sites where that could happen and put these things in place. And yes, that, what we're saying, yeah, in, in, in essence, what we're saying in our housing element is if we are able to do all of the things that we've put into our housing element, then we believe we would be able to meet this goal. And then we might want to have the consultants say, there is a, a buffer. So in addition to the RENA numbers, the state requires us to provide a little bit over, a little bit of overage for a buffer on that. And I, I don't know that we talked too much about that, but I don't know, Eric, would you like to say a few things about our housing element actually exceeds the total number of units that we're, we're required to do as kind of a hedge?
I'm happy to. If you don't mind going to slide thirteen, it might just be helpful to have that table up quickly. So, so the state, so in addition to needing your RENA requirement, so that top row of housing for all of those different, each of those different levels of affordability, from very low to low to moderate to above moderate. They ask that communities put a buffer in, as, as, as Ned said, a sort of a hedge to make sure that there's enough capacity in the city, particularly for those very low and low income housing units within the community, some of the ones that have been the hardest to produce amongst that without the moderate income housing over the last cycle. So they ask communities to include at least a fifteen percent buffer, but up to a thirty percent buffer. So somewhere in that range to really make sure there's enough sites for that affordable housing in the future. So if you go all the way down to the bottom line, so the very, the last line here, so the surplus. So you can see that if you look all at the total side, you have a surplus of two thousand six hundred and eighty-five units in those sites above the arena. So in, in essence, you have about a capacity of about sort of ten thousand housing units. So the RENA plus your surplus. What's interesting though is you have to look at the low and very low income states because the buffer is really along around those. So there you can see there's a smaller buffer because not every site that has capacity in the city is a good site for low and lower income housing. And so you can see there that there's a buffer of about four hundred units or about eighteen percent. So it's really to provide the city with some flexibility over time. So some of the sites in the sites inventory might redevelop at a lower intensity or with less affordable housing. And so some of this helps to buffer the city when those things happen. And as you'll see in the housing element, as you start to go through the process of the implementation of the housing element over the next eight years, as those, as properties redevelop over time, you might get new projects in the city that we haven't identified in the sites inventory. That's very likely. Some of the sites, you might have a site that turns commercial, which was not expected. This will give you a little bit of flexibility in that inventory, but then you have a program, your first program, which is to, which we will do is you'll replenish the sites over time. So if you need to find more sites for those lower income units, or those very low and low, you know, you'll have a process by which you do, and you look at these numbers every year and then make a decision about whether or not you need to add additional sites or find additional capacity within the city. And you'll go through kind of a smaller but similar process where we look at where are the vacant sites? Where are the underutilized sites? Where are there, where have we heard there's developer interest in, in building housing within the community? And, and go kind of through that process. And you might have to add new sites in to really meet that requirement over time. So this is the framework, right, that you start with? But that's going to change over time with each year you go through the process. And the housing element really puts into place both the, the programs to really monitor the progress and then the subsequent actions you might take either way to really help support and meet those housing goals that you've established in the plan itself.
Chair, I had one, had one extra question.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
I hope I don't get into trouble, but.
Actually, before, before, before you do there, so I, I just wanted to make, I see Director Andrade has had his hand up for some time. I just wanted to make sure, was there anything related to the, the current question here before Commissioner Urbana moves to the next question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Chuang. I wanted to, to address one of Commissioner Urbana's statements about promoting to developers. If this is still a good time, I could spend a, a brief minute just sharing more information. If you still need more information, this is related to city-owned property.
I'll leave that to you, Commissioner Urbana. Do you want to hear his comment there or did you want to go first?
Yeah, I was wondering, just really wondering like how we are trying to identify areas that we could improve in our housing. Is there, is this bad thought to think if we can get the, the jailhouse, move to another state and then use that, that portion of parcel of property for our housing? Just asking, wondering.
I, I can address that and then get back to the, the city-owned lots. Because I think it's really important to talk about promotions to, to our developers. We've been in conversations with the County of Santa Clara as it relates to Elmwood Correctional Facility. And it, it is not something that they're able to discuss in terms of its long-term opportunities for transitioning that use from a correctional facility to, let's call it educational or, or residential. Clearly, there's quite a bit of acreage there that could be repurposed. But that's going back to a conversation I had with representatives from there a couple of weeks ago. But they did indicate a willingness to connect me to the county executive. But I, I would say realistically, it's not land that would convert any time. Since we're talking about the county, however, they do own about a six and a half acre parcel that fronts eight eighty near the two car dealerships. That particular parcel, the county has been looking at a revenue generating, revenue producing type of use of which the city has obviously aligned itself in that regard. The county has issued, I think, two requests for proposals in, in the last several years and have not received proposals for, for car dealerships that the county thought would be a, a positive use. So the county has been holding that site for, for many years. And so we're, we're in conversations in that regard as it relates to public land. But I, I do want to just spend a minute to let you know that the city does own three parcels on South Main Street that we've been calling parcel one, two, and three. And combined, they equate to about two point seven acres. These are contiguous parcels. And in December of twenty twenty-one, the city council directed staff to dispose of parcel one. It's, it's roughly a, an acre or so. We have worked with a consultant on environmental assessment of the site as well as an asbestos and lead-based paint survey. Most recently, in the last few weeks, we received an appraisal. That appraisal, of course, is confidential in terms of the amount. But I'm bringing this up because those three parcels are zoned for high-density residential. And we will likely begin to market parcel one for disposition in the next month or two.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Chair. You have a question.
Yeah, I've got a, since we got you there, Alex. Do we have, as a city, have an inventory of empty lots? So if a developer comes to you and says, hey, I want to build a hundred unit apartment house, where can I do it? I don't know if it's for Alex or for Ned or.
We, thank you, Vice Chair Serradella. We do have a list of inventory that it's publicly owned land. So it's not just a city. It's, it's an inventory that includes city-owned land, county-owned land, valley water, VTA, BART, you know, MUSD, public agencies. But I would say that the city itself doesn't have a lot of land that would be available for that kind of development or repurposing, except for the three parcels that I was referencing. But it is something that we have conversations about in terms of a strategic property revenue acquisition fund, which we call a SPAR fund. And our mayor, Mayor Montano, has expressed interest in hopefully. And our mayor, Mayor Montano, has expressed interest in hopefully funding that fund in order to generate enough um funds to purchase land and essentially in the future have the ability to act as a developer. And it would provide an opportunity for site assembly, which is both challenging and can be really costly. But that site assembly then allows for more land to be developed and for highest and best use. Um so we we do have a public land inventory. Um but I would say, other than those three parcels on South Main Street, that's that's generally what we're uh looking at in terms of potential development for housing.
And is that what happens? A developer comes to you and says, hey, I got some money. I want to build some apartment houses. Where do you suggest we put them? Is that what happens or they're they're way ahead of you?
It's as as our planning director indicated, there are uh developers that will go directly to the planning department and talk about their conceptual plans. Oftentimes, they'll come to economic development and talk about mixed-use opportunities, including commercial and residential. The economic development team is very closely aligned with real estate brokers, mostly commercial, but we have been receiving interest from developers and investors that are interested again in in mixed use. So so yeah. For the housing team, there is an affordable housing fund, and um I know that earlier Planning Director Thomas was referencing affordable housing projects on uh Sango Court, and in particular, three five five Sango Court will yield, I believe, a hundred and two residential affordable uh units rather. Um and the city has invested six point five million dollars into that project. So there are opportunities when the city can invest within with an existing developer that's interested in in investing and bringing in affordable housing units as well as market rate units.
May I, oh, I can add just a little bit.
Oh, um, go ahead, Planning Director.
Yeah, Director Andrade has spoken very well about and is intimately involved with the publicly owned lands. So I on a in a broader sense, I would say that, yes, through this housing element, we actually have a full inventory of possible lands for housing development. And we've been primarily, in the presentation, we primarily looked at maps with the yellow, orange, and red on. Um there is a table that accompanies that, those colors, and it and it's a very detailed table that gives the you know, the accessory parcel number, the address, the owner, the zoning, the general plan, the capacity. And one of the other columns identifies whether it's vacant or if it is occupied by a building, if there's a building on it, what is the current use? So that becomes a very valuable read, and that's that's part of the technical appendices to this housing element. So that becomes a very powerful tool to any developer who's interested and has money available, wants to develop in the city. They could take that information, or if they meet with us or call us, we can share that information with them and point them in a certain direction uh as to where available sites for housing might be. What usually happens is that the developers are several steps ahead of us, and they they're they're already aware or their broker has made them aware of uh opportunity sites. I'll give it an example. Down on uh South Capitol, right on the border between on Capitol Avenue, but uh right on the border of Milpitas and San Jose, there is an older uh commercial center there, but many of the stores, including the the primary use was an older grocery store, and it's closed recently. And um I've had any number, that that parcel was other parcel, I've had any number of inquiries about that uh from developers who, you know, what's going on here? What's going on with your specific plan? What's going on with your housing element? Um what will the, and and really primarily their their uh question is, well, what can we build there? Because housing is such a need now, it's usually, well, how many units can I build there? And we usually have a conversation, or if it's mixed use, we'll have a conversation around, well, the city would like to see some commercial retained on the site, some type of, maybe it's ground floor commercial retained on the site. And then uh you would be able to build X number of of units there. So there's a little bit of back and forth, but we we get those types of inquiries really on a weekly basis on any number of sites around the city. And I'm I'm excited for this new housing element because it gives us a lot of very useful information on all of the available sites around um around the city.
I would also just quickly say, too, that um we have the opportunity to promote development opportunities through what's known as the Community Development Roundtable. It is a monthly meeting that's hosted by our city manager's office, and it includes the community development community service area, uh including economic development, housing, building, planning, and uh fire life safety. And we meet with this, these groups of real estate professionals, some developers, some real estate brokers. And uh the housing team, the housing element team has presented in front of this group multiple times. So that's just another way that we promote the opportunity for um development in the city.
Thank you to both of you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um Commissioner Galan, I saw you had your light on earlier. Did you still have your question or? No, no question. Okay. All right. Any other questions, the commissioners? Okay, uh if not, then um, you know, this being a public forum uh forum um or public item, um I'd like to open up the public uh forum. Um no one's in the chamber, but uh Ms. Medina, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, we have Mr. Albert Lester.
Okay, um so um welcome, Mr. Buster, and you have uh three minutes.
Hello, good evening. Commissioners, my name is Albert Luster with Northern California Carcass Local Union four oh five. I'm here today to speak on the city housing plan element and the need of area labor standards implementation. Labor standards include livable wages, healthcare, healthcare benefits, apprenticeship and local hire. Livable wages, the importance of having livable wages is because it helps our working men and women being able to balance wages or recurring inflation rate that has skyrocketed in the last two years. And be able to afford rent in our community and provide it basically for a family. Healthcare, since healthcare is a necessity for all humans, we cannot have our members of the community seeking medical attention because the employer does not provide any healthcare benefits instead of becoming, instead they become a burden to our medical systems. Apprenticeship, apprenticeship program helps the working class citizen gain knowledge, skills, craftsmanship. These apprentices can build the projects to the highest degrees by implementing skills that are learned in the training centers and the job sites. It also helps developers ensure the projects are completed on the timely manner and up to standards. These apprentices are the future builders of America. Local hire, local hire, local hire benefits our entire community, not only from tax revenue from from our local businesses, but also by tax revenue. By hiring locally, ensure that our citizens have more time to spend with their families, being involved in our community instead of spending time on the road trying to make ends meet. I would, I would like to ask the community and our elected officials, what are we doing to ensure that we include area labor standards in our housing element? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lester. Uh Ms. Medina, do we have any other one else, anyone else on the uh queue?
Chair, there are no other community members to speak in the queue.
Can I give a motion to close the uh public forum?
Motion to close the public forum.
I got a a motion from Commissioner Albana.
A second.
And I got a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby, roll call the Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Hi.
Uh Commissioner Wasti.
Hi.
Commissioner Galan.
Hi.
Commissioner Albana.
Hi.
Vice Chair Serradella.
Hi.
Chair Chuang, aye. A public uh forum is closed for this item. Right, uh any commissioners have any um final questions or comments, deliberations? Uh Commissioner Wasti, you have your um.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Galan.
Yeah, I'm regarding about the um likes of uh focus on housing, about the fifth, and then the permitted the sixth cycle. Can you please um put that on the screen?
You mean slide nine, is that?
Yes, that's right.
Slide nine?
Yes.
This slide?
Yes, um um first is the fifth cycle. And then there's in between the fifth and sixth is permitted units. Um tell me about the big difference on the fifth cycle and then the permitted units on above moderate income. They went up to twenty-seven, fifty-eight on the permitted units. These permitted units are uh built already? Or proportional?
Are you talking about the middle?
Yes.
Column there? Yeah, so uh earlier, there was uh mentioned by uh Planning Director that that was the the permitted units or things that um we're saying that that's where we had a direct effect as the planning commission on um you know, the number permits that we've, you know, permitted, and then that uh two hundred and forty-three down there is is part of that affordable housing um the percentage that we're allotting for, you know, new developments there. So I'll let Planning Director go ahead and and add additional comments to that.
That's perfect. I I like this uh slide. Um so you, what you see here again is on the fifth cycle is our pre our previous goal, really was our our goal for housing over the past eight years, and our our previous goal was to produce three thousand two hundred and ninety units. And then the different colors represent the different affordability levels. So that's on the left side, and then on the right side, you have our new goal was, as you can see, is substantially larger, had two hundred and four four percent increase. That is a substantial increase. Um and this is not unique to, I should add, this is not unique to Milpitas in any way. Again, the state has become very aggressive um in uh housing production goals statewide. So even though that looks like a lot, other cities have felt that same uh pain, if you will. So on the on the right side, then you have our new goal, six thousand seven hundred and thirteen. Again, the colors representing the different affordability levels. So in the middle is, you're exactly right, Chair, that is, that's the, that's a count of an actual count of reality. So whereas the others are just goals, this one is actual, that number represents, the total number, three thousand thirty-two units represents an actual number of units that have been approved um by the city for development at some point. I, this doesn't show like how many of those have actually been built, but a substantial, I I can say uh that a substantial number of those, not all of them, but a substantial number have been constructed. Many are occupied already. There are a certain number of units that um are in, we call it entitled. So they've come to the planning commission and received a planning entitlement so that they're able to build on that property. But for one reason or the other, usually it's the availability of financing, the project has not yet moved forward. Um but but the entitlement is in place, so the the potential or the possibility for development is there. A good example of that would be over on um Barber Lane on the other side of I eight eighty, there's a large parcel that in years past was approved by uh years ago for what was called the landmark building. It was like a twenty-story building. And uh it was approved at the time, it's probably ten, twelve years ago, but it was not feasible project. It was, it was too large for that site. So four years ago, the the new owners of that site came to the city and said, well, we we would like to propose a more realistic project for that site. Can we work with who on that? And of course, sure. So over the the next year, year and a half, we worked with them. They brought forward to the planning commission, in this case, the council, a new project on that site. It it's a large number of units. I think there's five towers over a um not large tower, they're like twelve stories over a uh, maybe it wasn't about ten story, eight, ten stories over a parking garage, and then it included some ground floor retail and office. And that was approved. And so that's sitting on our, we'll call it, well, it's sitting on our books, you know, that those three hundred or so units are sitting on our books. So they're included in this approved or permitted units, but they haven't been built yet. And that, there's a number of those projects, larger and smaller, that are, you know, are just waiting to be built. Um but and and so that's what that number represents. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. But on on the permitted units, there's no moderate income and low income, and then.
In in that, yeah, that's a really good uh question. So in, you're right, in the in the past eight years, we have not uh permitted any moderate or low-income units. Um I I think there's a number of reasons for that. Our our consultants might be able to speak to that a little more eloquently than I can. I I will add, though, that again, uh the the positive note here is that we do have the two hundred and forty-three very low-income units which were approved. And those are represented largely in two projects on Sango Court, which add up to two hundred and forty-three units as a direct result of the city adopting an affordable housing ordinance. Otherwise, we might not have seen those. And I would expect that in the years to come, that affordable housing ordinance, which is still relatively new and that, as you'll recall, it requires every new uh housing product, a multi-family product, over ten units to include fifteen percent of those units. They have to be designated as affordable. And um and and that can, that can be at any level, and then the developer decides what level they want to do, whether it's low, very low, or moderate. So um yeah, I I would hope that in the years to come, we will see uh a greater variety of housing types being built in our, when we come before you in years to come, hopefully that uh bar in the middle will begin to reflect a wider variety of housing types.
So it means a um the is above moderate income because of the demand, which is higher than the uh first column.
Um yeah, sometimes we refer to those above moderate income as market rate units. And so those, those are the types of units that most developers want to build because that will bring them the most, you know, that they're most of the uh, most builders, unless they're nonprofit, affordable housing builder, are for profit. And so that, you know, they have a profit motive, they would like to build the um market rate units because that will give them the biggest return on their investment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wong. So uh just, you know, one other comment on that slide, you know, again, so um I guess as as a commission and also even as a city council, is there things that can be done to affect? You know, so that, you know, you can see more, you know, the low income is, I mean, sort of the middle income housing that can be, I mean, it seems like it's, you know, just what I'm hearing, you know, it's sort of like the developers will, you know, come in and and then that's sort of, you know, maximizing the, you know, the ROI on that. So is there something that um, you know, potentially can be done on that? I mean, clearly, the low, the very low income, there's an effect on that. Anyway, just wanted to hear your take.
And it's, it's really interesting because sometimes the type of funding for the development is geared is um specifically targeted toward a type of affordability. And that's why you see the two hundred and forty-three units of very low income because the um Director Andrade mentioned that the city had invested a, was it? I can't remember now, three point five million in in the project at three fifty-five Sango?
Six point five million.
Six point five million. So part of the, you know, these projects are very expensive to build. So part of, part of the way that the city can influence it is this, if we have future projects like that where the city has a stake, in this case, a six point five million dollar stake, as the city is, as the proposal comes forward to the city, well, what, what, we want to build some housing, we need some help from the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Again, that Affordable Housing Fund is generated in a number of different ways. The city could then say, well, we want this type of housing. You know, there, there are certain stipulations that we could put on us investing in that project. And um that, that's one of the ways in which this housing element will influence the production of housing is that it provides policies for how those types of investments and how those types of decisions are made. And then I don't know, Mr. Yurkovich, if you have, if there's some additional programs or policies that we've included in the housing one directly at those middle income layers. Uh I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit. I know that's, that's an area of of very, of great interest to the state as well because not only Milpitas, but most cities, I would suspect, have bar charts that look very similar. We just haven't produced a lot of that middle. That's why it's called the missing middle. And there's, there's a lot of attention on missing middle housing now. Maybe you could speak a little bit as to how we're, we're um proposing to address that in our housing element.
Happy to do so. Um what are the, there are, I think, two specific programs that are in the housing element that really directly look at that kind of the families that are making sort of eighty percent of the area median income to a hundred and twenty percent, so that sort of moderate income. And those are housing element program four, which is about accessory dwelling units, and then program program twenty four, which is on missing middle housing. So you all have already a pretty substantial um set of housing programs related to ADU. So those accessory dwelling, that's right, you you host your, you have your regular meetings, you've uh created this really terrific toolkit for property owners and developers to really kind of push forward those types of housing. And what we know is that the the accessory dwelling units really kind of accommodate housing for everywhere, everywhere from very low income to low to moderate income housing for people in communities. So kind of those granny flats that we always think of. And I and I, the city even has, has been using the the ARPA funding, I think that's the right funding source to help incentivize some of those projects to happen within the community itself. So to not just having those tools and resources available and streamlining those through the permitting process, which your city has already been doing, providing information, education outreach, right? You're supporting that, but you're also putting, um, you're helping with incentivizing through those funding sources. Um, the second program I mentioned earlier is program number twenty four, which is on missing middle housing. Now, people talk about missing middle in sort of two different ways, right? Sometimes it's discussed as different uh housing for kind of those moderate income households, again, that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of of the area median incomes, right? So the market rate housing is being largely supplied by the private market through market rate housing, right? And then you have at the very bottom end, you have sort of those projects that are sort of those affordable housing projects that are targeting the very low and low income um populations within the community. And even in a lot of cases where you have projects that are mixed income projects that come forward in communities, a lot of the the sort of the mixed income, the lower incomes are really targeted at the very low and low income households, in part because there are subsidies and tax credits available for those units that would make them maybe more feasible, but then also they don't have to supply as many of those units typically to get whatever the density bonuses or other incentives that might be available for them. So you do have this sort of middle, right? So this this middle. The other component of missing middle is really housing types, right? So communities have very successfully um provided a lot of single family housing, quite a lot of uh all of the Bay Area, and quite a lot of it is is single family zoning. Um, and then also we're producing a lot of apartment style housing, but what we sort of miss is what's in between in a lot of cases. And that ranges from duplex, triplex, quadplex, like those smaller, smaller kind of cottage type apartments to townhomes and then to um different apartment types that you see in Milpitas. And what you guys have done really well is supplied, you have a lot of single family zoning, you're supplying townhomes, you're creating apartments. But what's missing in the in between is those kind of smaller units, the duplex, triplex, cottage apartment style units, which actually add a lot of housing diversity to the city. They typically are smaller, so they cost a little bit less. They're typically infill, so the people who are the market for those types of units, maybe drive a little bit less, walk a little bit more, so you have positive vehicle miles traveled. And so program twenty four really starts to identify in Milpitas where where some of those places might be appropriate for that style of housing. And then what are the kind of the incentives, what whether they are related to uh streamlining, permitting, zoning, those kinds of things, to the development standard, to make sure that those could happen in uh particular locations. Um, and Plan Director Thomas mentioned that one site near Sunny Hills, that might be a good opportunity for a small site like that. So you start to try and align to build to to find the place for those types of housing units which supply housing for kind of that moderate income category, because they are a little smaller, they can't be rented at as high rates. And they do produce all these other benefits that are really terrific for the community. And so that's been a way that communities, along with ADU programs, have started to look at how can we really target and think about supplying housing to to these people? And then you even get in a lot of cases um programs where, and and this is in the housing element, to really work with um organizations like the Milpitas Unified School District, where you can maybe look at opportunities for workforce housing on sites from that sites that are maybe underutilized that the school district owns. So right, that collaboration that you're looking for those opportunities. So it's kind of supplying a type of housing for a specific subset of the population, which are housing, which are having a very hard time finding housing, uh both existing housing resources and new housing resources within the community.
Great, thank you that answered my question there. All right. Any other question, Vice Chair, to your tell?
Yeah, I I've just got a quick question. Um, we approved, believe it was a condo project here next to Mabel Manus here a few months back. And we had an ADU in the front of the building. Did we get two credits for that?
Actually, I believe we do. If so, we, Eric, we've had a number, Mr. Yurkovich, we've had a number of uh projects recently that are townhome projects that uh we've uh worked with the developer to include an ADU on the ground floor of the townhome. And I believe those are counted as two separate units. Right, for purposes of housing element.
That's correct. They're counted as separate units. You get credit for both.
Yeah, and and it's interesting just not to go on and on. So that just to give you an idea, some of the conversations we have in the planning department around things like this that are a little bit innovative, because it's only been in the past year that we've had uh townhome projects proposed with ADUs. Most ADUs are associated with, you know, you put it in your backyard or over your garage or somewhere in your house. But these were going to be built new with townhome in it. And we get down to the nitty gritty, like where, how how is, what is the design of the building and how is the ADU included? Um, we have one developer who wanted to include the door, an interior door connection between the ADU and the primary unit, which was upstairs. And we wouldn't allow it because that that would then allow that ADU, what's supposed to be an ADU uh to function as an extension of the houses, essentially as another as another bedroom. But if you if you don't include that interior door, then it's a completely separate unit. And we felt like if if they were going to count it toward their density, the developer toward their density, city was going to count it towards housing, it needed to be a completely separate unit. And so um tho- those are some of the negotiations that go on behind the scenes on some of these projects to ensure that we're we're getting, you know, a full count of these units.
Okay, I just thought it was a great idea, and I'm glad we're getting a two for four with it.
Yeah, we agreed, and that's why we suggested and agreed with the developer. Yeah, this, uh, yeah, let's include ADUs uh in these. Because otherwise, you know, in past years, that ground floor of the townhome has if it's a live work, and so and we have some of those down here just south of City Hall on Milpitas Boulevard, then they become a live work unit. You might have a, I think, down here, we have one's a barber shop and one's an insurance office. You know, and and so that's how the the ground floor is used. And then the living unit, you have living quarters or above. But most of the time, it just becomes another bedroom uh or or a storage area on the ground floor. Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, I was on a different, I was going to add one other thing is um, you know, our affordable housing, the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance is very interesting. And as you saw in the chart, it's been successful in producing some units. The Affordable Housing actually has several different options for how a developer can meet the fifteen percent requirement. Um, one is to build the units on the site with as part of the project. We we usually see that here. Another one is that we call fee out. So there's an in lieu fee uh that the developer can pay per unit instead of building the unit on the site. They would pay a certain amount that would go into the city's Affordable Housing Fund, and that has been done. And 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 then there's another option that I don't think has been used at all that could be is they can not build the units on the site, but they could build them on another site, uh the same number of units. So and then there's a couple of other options. So I just, there's a number of options, but one of the ways that and to their credit, that, you know, the planning commission and the council have been very helpful to the city's bottom line on housing, if you will. Uh, I've I've seen the city council hold fast on the requirement that the units be built on the site as part of the project, rather than doing the fee out, taking the fee out method. Because generally, you know, we we try to have a fee that you know, and it's nice to have the money going into the city's Affordable Housing Fund, but generally speaking, the the fees will never uh don't necessarily equate to what the cost will be for building that unit somewhere else, because it it becomes very expensive and there's inflation and there's other factors that go into that. So it, uh, point being that it's it's to the benefit of the city on for the RENA numbers that the that we continue to um have a sort of an unwritten policy that the affordable units will be built as part of the project on the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, any other last questions, deliberations from any other commissioners? Motion? I don't know if we can put the that one recommendation up there.
Here, I have a um concern. Um, I know every eight year cycle um you're proposing again to build a hundred and thirty units or how many acres you're building in an empty space, it would occupy Milpitas empty space. Let's say um acres in five cycle is forty years. Do you think, do we have more space left in our Milpitas city? Remember, Milpitas city is not big as Oakland or San Jose. So this is my concern. Do we need that housing here in Milpitas or revenue? So I'm just concerned about you know, that this space, we need the space. We don't want to see the Milpitas as housing there, housing there, could be rebuilding around the area that you can't even breathe and even walk. This is my concerns. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wong. I don't know if you had any quick comment, uh, any director?
Yeah, just briefly, I would say um for each new uh residential project that is proposed, there are open space requirements, and that is generally broken down to private open space, which can be a balcony or a patio. And then there's a certain amount of acreage of uh shared open spaces. It's a park that is um required for each new project. And uh and then if we go a step above that, within the specific plan, a specific plan identifies areas for parkland within a larger area. So yeah, I think um the the comment is a very important one that in it, as we look at building all of these units, how do we do that in a very balanced way? So that we we maintain really, I I think the larger issue would fall under the category of quality of life. We don't uh necessarily want to look like Hong Kong and have a wall, wall to wall uh buildings. Uh, but the as the growth and the development of the community continues, how do we do that in a very balanced way? And then I would also add that Milpitas is blessed in another way in that we have um very nice hillsides to the east. And our, again, our community and our council have been very wise over the years in uh placing certain certain types of restrictions on development in the hillside. And and part of that is quality of life, part of that is view. And then part of that is preserving exactly what the commissioner is mentioning is a in ensuring that we have a certain amount of open space that is preserved for the enjoyment of the residents as well, which is really a very important aspect as well.
And thank you, Planning Director. All right, okay. Um, Commissioner Bana, you had your bite, huh?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, um, I'd like to thank the staff and also, of course, Mr. Hall, Mr. Yurkovich, also, of course, Alex and the rest um for the presentation. It's wonderful and well, well spent so much effort and this and time. So therefore, I'd like to recommend approving.
All right, um, so uh we put this slide up there. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Wong.
So I recommend approving and adopting resolution number twenty three dash zero zero one, recommending that the city council adopt an addendum the Milpitas twenty forty general plan final environmental impact report. That's the S C H two zero two zero zero seven zero three four eight and adopt the housing element update twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one of the Milpitas general plan.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Abana. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Uh, roll call vote. Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galong. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Abana.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Seodella.
Aye.
Chair Chwan is aye. Uh, motion passes. And uh, congratulations. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, new business uh ten dash one, review of Ralph M. Brown Act, the city attorney. Um, city attorney.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, can we go ahead and put up a slide deck? Thank you. So you guys, it's uh the new year, it's time everybody's Marie condo-ing their life, trying to figure out whether things bring them happiness or not. And uh, I'm here to remind you that the Ralph M. Brown Act and the open government laws, they bring you happiness. And uh, they're not the kinds of things we should discard. So this is just a little refresher on open meetings. Um, I believe there is a planning commissioner academy that takes place and that is taking place this year. And I encourage any of you who wish to attend to attend it, you'll get much more information than you're getting from me tonight. Um, that said, since not everybody can or will attend, uh, I wanted to go ahead and present this. Can I have the next slide, please? Um, so just to remind everybody, the Ralph M. Brown Act is the act that provides legal minimum for a local agency transparency and decision making. Um, this is what we all follow to make sure the public knows what business we're doing on their behalf. It allows the public to access its government uh in an important way, and especially an important way in the planning commission that's responsible for recommendations regarding entitlements. Next. Um, this must be followed by every, here I've written council member, I mean, planning commissioner. Um, but it must be followed by actually every commissioner and uh every appointed or elected official. Next. So uh, you guys are pretty familiar with the procedures of meetings. All meetings are going to be governed by the Brown Act. Um, they're going to have an agenda. Uh, all the procedures that you're going to use are Robert's Rules of Order. The presiding members are going to be the ones to chair the meetings. Uh, in this case, it's going to be the chair or the vice chair and the chairs absent. Next, please. Uh, you guys have your bylaws. I discussed them this morning. They were last adopted in two thousand nineteen. They're available on the website. They dictate everything you should do that's not in the rules board. Next slide. So as I said, the main thing about the Ralph M. Brown Act is that uh we're allowing the public to see the deliberation that you guys are going through when you're coming to make any decision. Um, there were ways to violate the F M Brown Act. And that's by having meetings in private. This could be a meeting of the entire commission. Um, more likely, it would be something that is referred to as a serial meeting. And here on this slide, we have various examples of serial meetings. Um, the daisy chain meeting pictured in the bottom right with, I don't think those are actually daisies, but whatever the flowers they are. Um, this would be a serial meeting in which uh one commissioner calls another commissioner, calls another commissioner, calls another commissioner, uh, each discussing the business of the city that's going to appear uh at some future time. Um, essentially, what you're doing by calling one commissioner, calling another, calling another, is creating a form and having a deliberation outside of the public view. This is a violation of the Brown Act um and should not bring you happiness. Um, another alternative for a serial meeting, that's sort of a classic serial meeting uh from the Brown Act is what's called the hub and spoke meeting represented by the bicycle tire we have here. Um, this would be if one commissioner calls a second commissioner to discuss the business and then calls the Calls a second commissioner to discuss the business and then calls the third commissioner, calls a fourth commissioner, thereby creating a quorum and. Again, doing the city's business in a private meeting rather than a public forum. The really, 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 really big one to watch out for now are emails and frankly, social media. So you can have a serial meeting by emails. One commissioner emails another commissioner, or more likely, somebody emails the group of commissioners. And commissioners respond with reply all. If enough commissioners are responding by reply all. Suddenly, you've created a quorum and you've done business, the city's business in that private email chain rather than in public. So these are the things we really want to watch out for with the Brown Act. Next slide. This is sort of describing in words what we just discussed. Defining serial meetings, the use of direct communication or intermediaries or technology. To develop a collective concurrence. Outside of the meeting. And this is what's expressly prohibited in the Brown. Next slide. So we got some best practices for emails. Again, in. The modern day emails, text messages and social media are the way the serial meetings can take place. And they can take place quite accidentally. So if you receive an email and it's addressed to. Multiple commissioners, make sure you don't. Push reply all when you're doing when you're doing it. You get an email from me or you get an email from staff. Generally, you would be B C C'd on the email. You wouldn't see the other commissioners. If you get an email from the public, that's probably not the case. And staff, me, planning director, none of us are perfect. We might forget that one time. So generally, don't hit reply all. Generally, don't take a position or make a comment on a question being asked to you by the public. The protocol would be to thank the person for bringing the item to your attention. Let them know that you will bring it to the appropriate staff member who ultimately can agendize it for the planning commission. You don't want to take a position statement or make a comment. Not merely because of the Brown Act, but also because of some due process requirements we'll discuss in a moment. Social media posting, again, this is a real big one. Somebody posts something on social media, one commissioner comments, a second commissioner comments, a third commissioner comments. That fourth commissioner comes in there and you've got a quorum, you've had a serial meeting. Even though it's on Facebook, it wasn't noticed, the public didn't have appropriate access. And it would be a violation of the Brown Act. So don't take positions on social media. You know, add individual commission or council members to emails responding to a constituent. So. Although it may seem wise to be adding extra people, what we're doing when we do that is risking creating a serial meeting. And finally, just take whatever cautions you can to comply with the law. Anytime you see. Three of your fellow commissioners start thinking, hey, do I have a quorum? Am I going to form a quorum? Should we be talking about city business? And. An easy precaution to take to comply with the law is always to call me. I'm always available. And I'm always happy to answer questions about the Brown Act. Next slide, please. So this is what we just discussed. If a constituent sends an email. To the full council or the full commission or a quorum thereof. Appropriate action to take is then send the email to staff. Or city manager, that could be me, that could be the city manager, that could be the planning director. Certainly reply to the constituent. We are a service oriented organization. We absolutely do not want to leave. Inquiries just hanging out in the wind. But don't reply all. And don't offer opinions that may make it seem like you've prejudged. Or hold an opinion on any issue prior to holding a public hearing on. And certainly, whichever member of staff. Gets sent the email from a constituent will also be following up with that constituent. And it would be entirely appropriate for you to follow up with the staff member to make sure that's happened. Next slide. So you you guys are aware, you got three kinds of. Or two kinds of meetings that take place. You have regular meetings, you have special meetings. There are slight differences as to what you can do and what you can adopt at each kind of meeting. Because of your bylaws, everything will be done by roll call voting. I think you're all familiar with roll call voting, but if anyone has any questions. Certainly bring them up. This fourth bullet point is really a big and important one. The public has the right to comment on anything that comes before the commission. And frankly, on anything that doesn't come before the commission, that's why we have the public comment period in the beginning of each meeting. This can be any subject matter within the jurisdiction. And must allow criticism, must allow criticism of. The council must allow criticism of the commissioners, must allow criticism of the planning director and God forbid, the city attorney. So you guys are good at following this, but this is a reminder. If it's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it. So in public comment, you might have somebody bring up something. That feels like it deserves a response. You might offer a brief response, thanking them for bringing something up. Similar to what we've discussed in emails, directing them to appropriate staff, maybe asking questions for clarification. Of course, you have an announcement a period period. If you're on any outside mission or if you have an announcement to be made. Feel free to make those announcements briefly, but not undertake debate on them. If there is something that comes up during a meeting. And you want to see it on an agenda for a further discussion, simply ask staff and staff can put it on the agenda for you. Next slide, please. Close sessions, you guys don't generally have close session. They are allowed in the Brown Act. For specific items and on a rare occasion, I suppose it could come up for you. In fact, it may come up. Related to the sale of property. If it requires some sort of zoning. So it could come up in the near future. We'll briefly announce it verbally that we're going into closed session. We'll go talk in a different room. Will be limited on the kinds of things we can talk about. Those sessions would be recorded by audio tape. And the big, the big thing is no one's allowed to discuss anything that comes out in closed session. In open session or with any member of the public. Next slide. So what are the legal ramifications for Brown Act violations? You'll get a stern talking to from me. That's not really a legal ramification, but you know, not especially pleasant. If the this body violates the Brown Act. A court could certainly enjoy in the action taken by the council, could invalidate an action taken. Or it could mandate correction, require us to hear the the item again. I don't personally have any. Enforcement authority. As it relates to the Brown Act, it's going to be the courts. But if it goes to the courts, it's going to be an expensive prospect for the city. The person who's pursuing the Brown Act violation will be able to recover their attorney fees. Individuals who intentionally violate the Brown Act, and I've never seen. Any commissioner intentionally violate the Brown Act, but I suppose it could happen. I've heard horror stories. They could be guilty of a misdemeanor and that would be pursued by the district attorney. Next slide, please. So I bring this up because there is a new amendment to the Le Brown Act. It's going to allow for electronic appearing appearances in very, very specific situations. If one of these things comes up, you'll have to let us know at the earliest possible time so we can set it up. I'll briefly go over it. An electronic appearance after. February, when the COVID emergency protocols are ceased by the state. These will be the rules for governing electronic appearances, going to require just cause or or an emergency. An emergency would be something like. A medical emergency, those kinds of things that you would suspect. Just cause is going to be something like childcare, care for an elderly parent. Travel and business of the city. One of those sorts of things. You need to call the planning director, city manager, or me at the earliest possible. Time when you find out that you have a just cause or emergency. Because that item will have to be agendized. And the item that will be agendized is whether or not it counts as just cause or emergency. To allow you to participate with a remote appearance. If the commission determines that there is just cause or emergency, you'll be allowed to participate remotely. You will have to identify every adult in the room with you. You must appear on your camera, not just via audio. And there'll be a limited duration and number of times that you can appear. You can't appear for. Longer than a specific period or more than a certain percentage of meetings for the year. Next slide, please. So this is not Brown Act stuff. But this is something that's very important. So I tacked it on to the end of my presentation here. This is the ideas of fair process and due process. You guys have a lot of public hearings. You had a public hearing today. And your public hearings can certainly affect the rights of individuals. Individuals who have substantial money to make and who are substantially invested, invested both. Both monetarily and emotionally in whatever project they're bringing before you. So we want to make sure that not only are your decisions fair, but that they appear fair from the outside. So. Generally, if you can't be fair, then don't participate. Avoid stating any opinion before the close of the hearing. We don't want to come across as having prejudged anything. Make decisions based on the record that's presented before you. It's not going to be appropriate. To make decisions based on what you read on Facebook or what you heard on the street or anything like that. Avoid the appearance of bias. Don't come in here wearing a T shirt saying. Pro developer, pro housing, whatever it is. We want to appear as unbiased as possible. Pay attention during public hearings. And understand that the job you do is going to be in large part judged by whether you're fair. And whether you appear to have integrity when you're sitting up here on the dais. Next slide, please. Now, fair process is what we strive for because it makes people happy. And because it's the right thing to do. Due process is what we require because. It's written in the Constitution of the United States. So what does due process mean? It means that there's notice. Generally, if you're going to have a public hearing, it's going to require ten days' notice. The staff is going to. Take care of publishing the notice in the appropriate places within the city, posting that notice and putting it in the newspaper. It's going to involve the opportunity to be heard. That means we're going to let the person whose rights are significantly affected be able to say their piece. We're going to do that appropriately. We're going to do that respectfully. We're not going to let people have six hours to make their case, but we are going to give them the time they need. To be able to make their case. And it means that you have to act as a fair and impartial decision maker. This supply, these due process requirement applies to life, liberty and property interests. So every entitlement that comes before you that could significantly affect somebody's property interests. I don't think on the planning commission, you'll deal much with life or liberty. And here we've got the due process clause that's in the Fourteenth Amendment. No state shall deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of the law. That's where all of this stems from and many, many, many books have been written on the topic. So how do you protect due process and fair process? You make sure to use appropriate decorum. Again, this body is very good at using decorum. So although I say this, I say, I say it in the spirit that you should continue to do what you've been doing. The decorum we use is staff presents a report. The council should ask questions after staff has presented the report, but should not offer its opinions at that time. After the staff presents a reports and council has had an opportunity to ask questions, public comment. And period should open. Or the public hearing should open. This is when the person whose rights are being affected, generally, it's going to be an applicant, but. It may not always be. Will have the chance to say their piece. The public will have the chance to say their piece. Staff will have a rebuttal if a rebuttal is necessary and. The applicant or affected individual will have a rebuttal to whatever staff says. At that point, it's appropriate to close the public hearing. And you guys can have a debate. During that debate, you should and can express your opinions on the dais. That's the appropriate time to do so. That debate generally would end with a vote, either in favor of the individual or in favor of. Or against the individual. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of me because I didn't make this slide deck and because I'm vain. Important on there is my phone number and my email address, which I encourage you to use if you have any questions about this. I'll put something together in the near future on conflicts of interest, so we can also go over that briefly. Because I think it's important. In the meantime, if you have questions about the Brown Act, if you have questions about conflict of interest. You're free to ask them now or more likely. Swing by my office on the third floor, give me a call, we'll go over to Pete's and have coffee. Whatever it is that we should do to make sure that there are no conflicts and that the Brown Act is being followed. Next slide. And I think that's it. And I'm happy to answer. Questions, although with the caveat that I won't generally dispense legal advice on the dais and I may ask you to. To talk to me privately.
Thank you, city attorney. Any questions for city attorney, many commissioners? Not. Thank you, city attorney. Legalese, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by writing. Filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days. Of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Next item adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Oh, second.
Second.
And second from Commissioner Gallo. Roll call vote. Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Gallo.
Aye.
Commissioner Albona.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciadella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. Meeting is adjourned. Chair Chuan is aye. Meeting is adjourned.